We're calling this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. Could I ask for roll call, please?
Chair, Dr. Jeff Rivera. Absent, and he did provide notification of his absence this evening, so he will have an excused absence. Vice Chair Rosa Holloway.
Here.
John Delulo. Absent, unexcused absence. Maria Carney.
Here.
Brandon Whaley. Absent. Unexcused absence. Carmelo O'Quindo.
Here.
Tabitha Rubin, and she did provide notification of her absence for this evening's meeting.
Okay, we don't have a quorum.
Madam Chair, yes, we do. We have a quorum. Three constitutes of quorum. So we do have a quorum, and we can proceed.
Okay, very good. I need an approval of the minutes. From June 16, 2020.
I'll go ahead and put my first approval on this meeting.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Call for, call for the vote?
Call for a vote.
Call for the vote.
I'm sorry, may I make one comment? Because we're six feet apart, you can remove your mask. It's okay to do so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's kind of hot under there.
And also, as a reminder, just make sure you speak loudly and clearly into the microphone.
Uh, roll call?
Roll call?
No. We still have to call for the count.
Yeah, we have the motion, the second for the approval of the minutes of June 16, 2020.
I said first, right?
First. And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes three zero.
New business. We have ordinance number 2020-22, Medical Arts Campus Overlay District, LDC Amendment, Case Number CDA 19-00003. Um, staff, yes.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. Mr. Attorney, can you explain to everyone what it means with us having three members here tonight? What, how many do we need to pass and fail? Is it?
Yeah, we have a quorum tonight. We have three members here with quorum, so a simple majority of the quorum will be needed to pass on the items that are before us. They're all recommendations.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, the case before you tonight is an amendment to the city's land development code to create an overlay district that will be known as the MAC, the Medical Arts Campus. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for growth management and economic development. Staff has reviewed this request and recommends approval. As such, it is requested that the Planning Commission also recommend approval of ordinance number 2020-22. The city hired GAI as a consultant on this project. Blake Drury is here tonight to present the background and design standards of the MAC overlay district. Please bear with us as we sanitize.
That's okay, that's okay. We got all the time in the world. We gotta stay safe, you know? That's the most important thing.
Hi, good evening. My name's Blake Drury, and I'm a planner with GAI Consultants. And as Melissa said, we were hired by the city to develop a concept plan for the Medical Arts Campus and then the, the standards that are before you tonight. I appreciate the, the service that you all are doing. I'm on the municipal planning board in the City of Orlando, and I spent all morning in your chair today. Except it was against a computer screen. So this is, this is a little bit more back to normal to be presenting in front of you, and I appreciate that chance tonight. As, as we start to look at the, at the campus, just to, to orient you, the MAC is about 240 acres that's around the St. Cloud Regional Medical Center. In fact, tonight, here, we are within the MAC. It extends all the way over this far. And as we think about the campus sort of at a broad scale, we look at the things that might affect development going on in the region. Things like the Turnpike with proposed interchange improvements and, and even more proposed interchanges. We think about Neo City and, and what Osceola County is getting started there and, and sort of the, the biomedical sciences field and, and sensors. We think about the things that are going on downtown and the, the renaissance that we see there and, and investments like the, the streetscape on, on New York Avenue. And then even if we, if we go a little bit further away, we, we think about Medical City at Lake Nona and all the investments that are going on there. And so that starts to kind of put a frame on, on some of the opportunities that might be situated around the, the Medical Arts Campus. If we look a little bit closer and, I don't know which, I guess I'll point, I can't point there because it doesn't work on the TV, but if we, if we sort of look a little bit closer at the, at the campus proper, you can see the boundary that's on there. And when we look at the particulars of the campus, you know, we see this range of different building types and conditions. So, you know, all within close proximity of the hospital. We've got existing residential, we've got shopping centers, we've got obviously the, the hospital and the, the medical office buildings. But then there's also things like personal storage. There's some, a little bit of, of industrial use there. And there's, and there's parks and civic areas. So there really are lots of elements of, of community already there that sort of exist in a, in a more sort of haphazard way that aren't really linked together like you would want a medical campus to be in. We'll talk about what that might turn out to be in, in a couple minutes. Now, since this is the Planning Commission, you all are probably intimately familiar with the sort of traditional land use controls that, that are in place. We've got future land use that runs the gamut from private institutional, public institutional, industrial, commercial, residential, and, and a couple of different forms. And then we have zoning that, you know, ranges from professional, industrial, highway business, multifamily. And so you might imagine that there are a wide variety of, of different rules and standards across, for development across this campus. And so one of the things that that identifies is the need to start to direct some of those, some of those regulations in a more precise way because we understand that, you know, in the professional district, the same rules apply here as they do in every other professional district within, within the city. And with the campus, we think that there's, there's a little bit of a targeted need for some of these. And so that, that gets into some of the things that we've recommended that we'll talk about in, in a second. When, when we look at, envision St. Cloud and the work that was done there, you know, envision included the MAC as part of the character town and suggested certain actions per the plan. One of those was to look for opportunities to increase density, to focus transportation improvements, and continue these efforts with the focus on, on public realm improvements. When it comes to opportunities, there are many, we think, for, for the campus. You know, we think that there are, there's a chance to transform gateways from 192 into the campus. We think there is a big opportunity and a big need, frankly, to make more internal and external road connections. This, this is a, a place that is fairly sparse in roadway connections, and that has the effect of pushing a lot of traffic into a few places and causing more congestion, frankly, than is probably deserved based on the, the amount of development that's, that's within the area. We think that there's an opportunity to, in a sort of longer term scale, to leverage city-owned properties to, to benefit the, the district. In fact, there's maybe some opportunities for master stormwater on some, some city properties. And then finally, we think that there's, there really is a chance now to expand and intensify the core of this medical use area, but that has to be done in a way that, that is reasonable and rational and is predictable at the, at the end of the day. Now, when we think about predictability in a campus like this, I think it's really important to, to point out that other hospitals in the central Florida region have sort of this similar plan and overlay system of, of land use and design guidance in place. So in Orlando, on the left, Florida Hospital Health Village, done through their PD plan and, and some special standards that are written into the, the City of Orlando's comp plan. Also in Orlando, on the right side, ORMC is part of a Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District that has a whole series of interconnected infrastructure and, and land use changes. And then even out in Ocoee, you know, on the west side of, of the region, Health Central has a similar sort of regime under the, the CRA plan and, and their target area. What's important about this is we think the fact that, far from being something unique in the region, this is something that the folks who work in development in this type of development, who think about how their hospitals grow, who think about building medical facilities near hospitals, who think about that ancillary development, this is the sort of expectation that they have, that this will be in place to guide development in these, in these areas. And so we started this work prior to Orlando Health purchasing the hospital, and I think it's, it's important to, to recognize that the, the two on the right, or the one in the center and the one on the right, Health Central and ORMC are both Orlando Health Hospitals. So there's, there, this would not be something new to them. So what we're, what, what we've got here is really a set of design standards and overlay that, that comes in two parts. The, the first part is the plan, and this talks about the vision and the incremental frameworks, the things that make up that vision. And so the plan is sort of lofty, it's the big goals, it's where we're headed. And then the second part is the code. And the code is what actually guides that development. It's the zoning requirements to achieve the plan. And we'll talk about in a second why it's important to have both of those pieces. So when we see this, this graphic that's drawn here that shows, you know, a hospital and some expansion of different medical uses and some residential uses that might support folks who, who work at the hospital, when we see commercial uses in here and, and, you know, the, the way that the park is connected to, to the, the remainder of the campus, this is an illustrative example of what the MAC could become. It's, it's a possible outcome, it's not the only outcome. But what it shows is how these, these five moves that we're trying to accomplish can happen. So a medical employment focus with an urban mixed-use form. So we're not trying to sort of spread things wide. We're actually trying to make a statement that says, this is really a medical campus, and, and we want uses that support that here, and we'll, and we're trying to, to have some standards that make it easy for those uses to, to happen. We want it to be well-connected to the rest of the city. It, it needs a finer grain of, of street network to, to make those connections. The visibility and the brand of the campus has to, to come out, and it really has to be able to, to leverage those city-owned properties. Now, I can't stress enough that the city and the, and the property owners and the, and the developers and the end users, they'll all work toward this vision incrementally, right? So there's lots of parcels, there's a lot of different owners, there's different starting points and different expectations for development. And so as much as we might like to, we can't just flip a switch and see this, see this place on the ground. That's why we need the, the code as a way to inform those development decisions as they happen. So when we think about that, we think about it in, and we'll talk about it in these sort of two pieces. The public realm, the places that we all use, the streets, the trails, the, the parks, and then the private realm, the buildings, the parking, the other spaces on the lot. And those two, those two together create the campus. And as we've built the code, we've separated the, essentially the rules and regulations for the public realm from the private realm to make sure that those two work, work in sync. So the, the public realm framework that you see on the left, this lays out the desired streets and blocks, and there's standards for what those streets look like, so it's, it's very clear to, to folks who will build here. And then the private realm, on the right side, that describes how buildings fit on their sites and how they relate back to the public realm. Because, you know, as, as the, as the city, our main task is to think about that public realm and be stewards of the public realm, the places that we all use. And the way that the buildings relate to that right-of-way in that street has an incredibly important role to play in that, in that setup. So, as I said, the code has public realm standards. You know, we, we work both for cities and counties, and we work for developers. So we have been on both sides of this, of this scenario. And what I can tell you is that developers really need clarity. So they want to know what the rules are so that they can have the proper expectations for what they can do on the site. And, and also important is they want to be sure that everybody's following those same rules so that you're working toward a common vision. And if the person on this side of the street has an expectation of what they're gonna, gonna be made to do, the person on the other street feels comfortable that, you know, you're not gonna get to slide something by and, and won't be held to the same, to the same standard. So the public realm standards, they, they very clearly cover the location and the design of, of streets. They talk about the future condition of existing streets. So how we get sidewalks, there aren't sidewalks on many of these, of these streets, how we get things like, like street trees, maybe some of these places might need on-street parking. That's laid out in the, in the public realm standards. On the other side, we've got standards for land uses, for density and intensity and, and building placement and massing, all built to reinforce that idea that, one, this is a, an emerging urban place, that it's not rural or even suburban, that it's a place that you can, you can walk around fairly easily. And that there's a, a emphasis on architecture, so supplemental to the city's current commercial architectural standards. There's some things that, that are really sort of, of tweaked and calibrated to the needs of a, of a medical arts district in terms of facades, of materials, park space, parking lot design, screening, all of those elements that a lot of times get sort of deferred to some standards that may not be appropriate for the kind of place that, that the city is trying to, to create here. So just, you know, to, to summarize it, we've got the vision that talks about the big ideas, about connectivity, about uses, about parks and streets. And we've got the, the actual code, which I believe is the, the subject of the ordinance tonight, that's really the nuts and bolts of land use change management to achieve that vision. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have for me this evening.
Anybody have any questions, Steph?
I do. It's the space for, like, you're talking about Lake Nona, and I open two hotels in Lake Nona. Do you have a site for any hotel here, like an 86 room or 56 rooms?
So one of, one of the uses that's allowed is, is hotel. And I think that goes with the idea that there's lots of support uses that need to happen around these, these medical centers. And if we just leave it to chance, then there's no, there's no expectation that, you know, how that hotel is designed and sited fits with the, the broader view of the campus.
The shoe print, yeah.
Right, right.
The ballpark, are there any plans of eventually removing that and developing that site?
No, in fact, we showed, if I can...
I hope not, because it's, I mean, there's a lot of kids going there.
Yeah, well, you can, you can see in the public realm diagram, the big green is, is the ballpark. And, you know, actually, when you think about it, one of the things that, that we've tried to lay out is, you can see along the, along the bottom on the canal, we think there's opportunity for a trail that can actually have some regional connections to things that are happening over on, on Budinger and even further to the, further to the west. And so that, we think, is a, is sort of a long-term piece of, of connectivity that can, that can happen to make the park even better.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
I do. How many students are they gonna be registering in the, in the medical field?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to it.
The traffic, that's what I'm thinking about, the traffic. And then if you're all looking at that, you can't leave the restaurants and the bars and everything of downtown, that's like, you know. But you need to put a cart, like Lake Nona has, the little bus that doesn't have a driver to certain areas, so you need to do over, cross over 192, because that thing's not gonna work with the lights and everything. There's a lot of thinking on this one.
Right.
And the roads really need to be improved before any of that, you know, is building up.
Correct, correct. And, and I think, you know, it's, it's hard to point at one thing and say it's the most important part of, of the code, but the location of the street network and the, the detail that's focused on that, that gives some clarity about how that network grows, is, is a critical part of this because, as I said in the, in the opening, it's a pretty sparse network, and it pushes traffic to only a few intersections. And that's what, that, that's what ultimately makes a, a, a street network fail, is not necessarily the, the number of segments that it has, but the, the intersections, the places to make turns.
Yeah, you need to put the infrastructure in there first before you start building a bunch of buildings like that.
Correct. So this, so this, so this part of the plan is actually, this is the city saying, here's where we expect to see streets.
Do we have any questions from, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions from, from the public? Anybody have any questions? No. So this is close to the public now, this session? Do we have any further discussions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Attorney, do we have to approve it tonight, or can we ask them to come back?
It's on the agenda for a recommendation to the council.
Okay. I'd just like a little bit more detail on it.
You can make that part of the motion.
Yeah. Please, please try to speak into the microphone so that it's, I know it's difficult, but please.
Yes, sir. There you go.
Okay.
I have a heavy voice tonight, sometimes. Well, I would like to make a motion to recommend that I would like more study on it, the findings within the land development of the code of ordinance number 2020-22. Is that the one?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be mine.
This is, this is for DRC case CDA 19-00003.
00003.
Okay. And just to clarify, your motion is that you're recommending denial of the amendment at this time based upon a need for additional information?
Yes, sir.
Can you be, can you give a little bit more?
Road, more infrastructure about it, more detail on it.
Are you talking about the, the stages that they, this is supposed to be developed? Meaning that the roads are gonna be developed first?
Yeah, because we, not we, but it seems to me, that I've lived here 50 years now, but the, the roads always come afterwards. And no. And then you got, everybody here is always jammed up. We just had 192 extended, and we need it again. And what are you gonna do? Go to Tallahassee and ask them for, there's a word for it, that they take your land away and everything? No. This is a hometown.
So you, you basically want a, a stage of the development?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you're recommending, at this time, denial of the amendment to the LDC? Okay, so that'll go up to the council for them to, to take your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case would be DRC case CNU 20-0002, resolution number 2020-118R. It's a, a, an application for conditional use. School District of Osceola County Transportation Bus Depot.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. This item is a request for a conditional use approval for the School District of Osceola to allow a proposed transportation depot and maintenance facility on the western portion of the subject property. The subject property consists of approximately 131 acres. The subject property has a future land use of low-density residential, and the current zoning classification is agriculture. Transportation or bus depot is not specifically identified as a use on the table of permissible uses. Therefore, staff determined that the proposed use most closely reflects that of a public utility and service structure. The proposed use is consistent with the general pattern in the area and will have no adverse impact on existing public infrastructure. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. On July 22, 2020, the Community Development Director and Osceola School District Representatives held a community meeting via Zoom. held a community meeting via Zoom to discuss the proposed project. Staff has reviewed this request and recommends approval with the following conditions. The first condition would be that the frontage along Nova Road shall have a high landscape buffer, which is approximately a 40-foot buffer with dense vegetation. The second condition would be that all maintenance activity conducted within the 300 feet of a residential district shall be located in a completely enclosed building, or shall have a high landscape buffer, and again, that's a 40-foot buffer with vegetation. And any maintenance activity located at a distance greater than 300 feet will be located outdoors, or can be located outdoors, but we will still require a low landscape buffer, which is approximately 10 feet. And the third condition would be that a traffic impact analysis may be required during the site development review process. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. And staff is requesting that Planning Commission recommend approval based on the six factual matters within the land development code and approve resolution 2020-118R with conditions that we just went over. Staff is available if you have any questions. And the representative from the school district is also present here tonight, Rhonda Blake, if you have any questions for her.
Thank you.
Ma'am, Chairman, I'm just making a comment. In the packet on this case, the criteria, the six criteria in the land development code that you should consider equally, each of the factors, and in order to approve, would need to find and respond affirmative to each of the six factors. They're found at the last four pages of your packet. And then the responses from the applicant under each of those posed issues are the last two pages. So that will be what the commission will need to review and consider here this evening on this case for conditional use.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Is the applicant here?
The applicant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Rhonda Blake, Director of Planning Services for the School District of Osceola County, and I can answer any questions that you may have regarding the conditional use.
Now, on the buffer, okay, is this just vegetation, or is there also a berm gonna be planned?
So we did not receive the staff recommendations until late this evening, well, yesterday evening, but I did not see them until right before the meeting. So I will have to share these with my Facilities Department. State requirements for educational facilities by the Department of Education also rule us much more strict than the Florida Building Code. So I will need time to make sure these special conditions will keep us in compliance with our state requirements for educational facilities.
Okay. Staff may have some answers here.
The buffer right now does not require a berm. What it does require, though, is some sort of masonry wall or screening, an opaque screening.
Okay, well, that's not very pretty. A berm would be nicer, yeah. Because it does back onto some residential areas. Okay, thank you.
I can tell you that in the past, when we have these requests, we do work with the entity making the request. So typically, we're able to reach a resolution that's satisfactory to the SREF as well as the entity that we're working with. So I'm pretty sure, but I just can't shoot from the hip tonight and say what we can agree to.
That can be settled at the site plan review meetings anyway.
Right. And we'll probably reach some kind of agreement prior to the City Council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any questions?
I'm going with the traffic. What are you, I mean, the traffic out there right now, it's...
Well, Nova Road, it's getting, it's getting pretty busy with the new subdivisions. So you'll have those buses every morning. But, you know, Michigan Avenue, it's right in the middle of town, so they had it too. So those buses, they're gonna have to travel on one road or the other, you know?
So what will happen with the Michigan Avenue facility is those buses will come to this facility. We've outgrown that facility. So we currently send approximately 40 to 50 buses back to Kissimmee every day, because the St. Cloud facility can't accommodate those. It's costing us a few hundred thousand dollars a year. We call that deadhead time, as they drive back and forth each day with no students on the bus. So those buses will move out to the Nova Road facility. And then if you're familiar with the area, which I'm assuming you are, we also have a maintenance compound on 10th and Virginia. We will move that to Michigan Avenue, and then that will free up the 10th and Virginia property, which has been a long-term commitment of ours to the City Council. So that will free that property up to go back on to the market for something that's more visionary for you to complete the vision of that community. So the buses on the east side of the county already serve the east side of the county. So I know there's been some rumors, we're gonna bring all of our buses to the east side of the county. The Simpson Road one will stay into play. We're also looking at a satellite facility on the west side of the county. And then this, so basically, the buses house there. They're already the buses driving in the community. And we are in the process of doing a traffic warrant study analysis. So of course, we will adhere to whatever the study proposes.
So you're not closing Michigan Avenue?
We're closing it from a transportation standpoint, but the handful of white fleet maintenance vehicles that are currently found on 10th and Virginia, they will move over to the Michigan Avenue facility.
Okay.
10th and Virginia is the old side of the high school.
Yes, ma'am. It's next to the park.
Right.
The old cannery, the cannery park that you constructed.
So the traffic on Michigan Avenue will be greatly reduced.
Oh, definitely from the buses leaving, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
The only thing that worries me is the traffic on Nova Road with all the accidents that have been happening over there. When is that, the survey gonna be done about the traffic?
So that is going now. It's part of our due diligence. So we would not move forward with the final purchase until the study comes in. As far as the traffic flow of the buses, our buses will peak. So the morning buses are out very early, and then they'll come back in opposite. So we're typically out when the peak of regular traffic is not, and then we're running in the evenings. Again, typically, we're opposite of the main flow of traffic. But we are expecting a red light at that intersection, because we do not want our buses coming in and out without it. So that would also be advantageous to the Lakes of the Westerly.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do we have anybody from the public that has any questions?
Or comments? Public comment?
Public comment. Public comment, yeah. No, okay. Do we have any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of resolution number 2020-118R based on the six factual matters with the land development code.
Does the motion, and this is for DRC case CNU 20-0002, correct?
Yes.
Does the motion include the conditions that the staff had recommended as part of the approval that are part of your packet?
I'm with it. We approve it, waiting on the traffic analysis.
So adopting the conditions?
Yes.
As part of the motion, okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next case is DRC case Resolution Number CNU 200003, 2020-144R. It's a conditional use for St. Cloud Christian Preparatory School.
Good evening. Melissa Dunklin again. This item is a request for a conditional use approval for the St. Cloud Christian Preparatory School to allow a parochial school on the subject property, which consists of approximately 4.69 acres. The subject property has a future land use of low-density residential and a zoning classification of agriculture. According to Table 3-5, a parochial school is allowed as a conditional use in the agriculture zoning district. The development is consistent with the general pattern in the area, and there are no adverse impacts on existing public infrastructure. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2020-144R. I'll repeat that. That's Resolution 2020-144R. Likewise, it is requested that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Resolution 2020-144R based on the six factual matters as required in the land development code, and the applicant is present and available for questions.
Would the applicant come forward, please? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry. That's okay. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Commission members. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering, 2017, 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. I'm here tonight respectfully representing the owner and the developer. And I would like to just start out with just kind of a basic background of the project. It is a request for a parochial school on the subject property. Essentially, would be constructed in two phases. We'd have a first phase consisting of...
Excuse me for a second. Can you make sure you're speaking to the microphone?
Is that better?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Every time you turn around, we don't hear you.
So it is a request for a parochial school to be constructed in two separate phases. The first phase would consist of an educational building facility or complex of buildings consisting of approximately 9,000 square feet with associated parking. And then the second phase would have the gymnasium at approximately 11,000 square feet and additional parking to support that specific use. I would like to also add that the proposed buffers surrounding the property, the intent behind those is to preserve existing vegetation, where possible, remove invasive species, and then go ahead and fill any of those voids that may have been created by the removal of invasive species, or perhaps where voids do currently exist, with landscaping, professional landscaping. I would also like to make part of the record a few exhibits that I have here tonight, which are representative of the elevation of the proposed buildings, that kind of depict the architectural elements, building materials, and then also a depiction of the proposed wall that you see on the south-southwest corner of the property. Respectfully, tonight, we would request Planning Commission recommendation of approval, but also respectfully request that we have the opportunity to respond to any comments or concerns or questions that you may have. And I am here to do so. Thank you.
I know you mentioned something about the vegetation and so forth. I know the property, I happen to know the property, and I know on your northwest side, you have a very low area.
Sure.
What are you planning on doing with that? That's a swamp right there.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Just the off-site of the northwest corner of the subject property, there is a conservation easement in place. Essentially, I don't know if you had a chance to look at our conditional use site plan, but that corner would essentially be preserved as well. And that particular area, the west side and the northwest side, is where we had proposed to place our wet detention pond or stormwater pond. I have the concept plan here with me as well.
Are you planning on draining additional water into that area? Because it's gonna flood the property to the north if you do.
Well, that will be a part of the permitting process with South Florida Water Management District. That's the Water Management District that governs this particular property, as well as the Planning and Engineering Department with the City of St. Cloud. So that's something that would all be permitted if and when we get to the next step. So here tonight, we're really just asking for the specific use of a parochial school on the subject property. I'm happy to go ahead and share that concept plan as well. I don't know if you guys have that.
Do we have any questions?
How many grades is it gonna have? How many grades is it gonna be to? Because our parochial school right now goes to the sixth, and then you get sent up to Bishop Moore.
The proposed facility would basically facilitate kids K through 12.
It is K through 12.
K through 12, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It is also important to note, I think, that this particular facility actually is currently in operation at the Baptist Church off of 13th Street on 192. And so essentially, the owners of that facility are looking to relocate, permanently relocate, and essentially would take those existing students, that existing program, and move it to this location.
How many kids are we talking about?
Yeah.
The max, the maximum, would be 270 students across the entire program. And of course, that's also subject to fire department occupancy, state of Florida requirements, City of St. Cloud regulations.
You'll have a lot of traffic.
Well, I think the point I was trying to make is that because this facility really is already in place, essentially, these trips are on the roads now. Essentially, what you're gonna do is relocate this facility to this particular location. If we were to look at this as just a standalone, and it wasn't already existing, basically, the basis would be a PM peak hour. And if you look at the projection based on the 10th edition of the ITE Generation Trip Generation Manual, you're looking at 26 PM peak hour trips that would be leaving the property. And that's actually 3.7% of the existing PM peak hour volume traffic, background traffic existing on Canoe Creek Road, which is actually considered a de minimis impact. It's less than 5% at 3.7%. And that's if we look at it as a completely new facility. Again, this is an existing, sorry, this is an existing facility. We're essentially relocating that program to here.
Yeah, but the existing facility is up on 192.
Yes, ma'am.
Knocked down Canoe Creek Road in a residential area.
Sure, certainly.
So that's quite a difference. You're in a commercial area there. And then, right next to a lot of residential, you're gonna have kids going out for lunch break and sports and during the day. That's, I don't know. It's kind of close.
Sure, certainly.
Do you have any questions?
I would just like to add, you know, we have proposed the median buffer around the entire property except for the southeast corner, where the main access would be, and that also incorporates a wall. If this were a standard institutional use next to low-density residential, the LDC only requires a 10-foot buffer. We felt it was appropriate in this particular case to go ahead and increase that to 25 feet, call it a median buffer, preserve the existing landscaping, add additional landscaping where it may be needed. And I have had discussions with several of the neighboring residents, and it is my belief after those conversations that they also have that same feeling or that same sentiment.
Okay. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody in the public to speak? Come on up.
For everyone that wishes to address the commission, please be sure to fill out the slip with the case number and your name and address, and turn it in to our clerk when you've, before leaving here tonight, if you address the commission. Thank you.
She's a very good housekeeper. State your name and address, please.
We certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
She's a very good housekeeper. State your name and address, please.
We certainly appreciate that. My name is Richard Greenwood. I live at 2250 Tybee Road. So my property backs up to the corner, lower left-hand corner of the property. And I've lived there since 2006 or for 14 years. My wife has been in communication with the applicant, Jeremy, and we certainly do appreciate their willingness to work with us. Just like to read into the record what my wife-
Gerald.
And then I do have some questions. She said the project's looking good. We're thinking that this type of use is probably better for us than a higher-density residential development. But we're hoping to keep some of the existing trees that are in the area. This area, if you look at the original plan for the areas, like the last five acres that hasn't been developed in the surrounding area, and we've had all kinds of wildlife, in fact, so much that I've had to remove the, I think I've removed four raccoons and three possums and other wildlife to the wildlife resorts further away. But we are still, we have a lot of birds. We have a family of cardinals, blue jays, red-headed woodpeckers. We have a pair of Cooper Isles owl, Cooper-
Hawks.
Hawks. That live in the corner there and the large oak tree. And so we're hoping that we can keep as much as possible. The rear area does flood during heavy rains, and it's not only the northwest corner, but the southwest corner does retain a lot of water. I checked the flood maps, and it's not designated a flood plain or floodway or in the flood zone at all. I do think there may be some environmental conditions. The questions that I have relate to the buffer. And behind my home, he's proposing a 25-foot land buffer. And I looked at the buffering standards in the Land Development Regulations under Section 8.4, and the medium buffer requires five large trees. I'd like to know what a large tree is, four medium trees, what sizes those are, 30 shrubs, what height those are. And the reason I'm asking, when we attended the public hearings for the neighborhood Walmart, we were told that they were going to put in very large trees and kind of match the landscaping. Well, we ended up with twigs.
Well, these questions actually are going to be answered, or you can address those, at a site plan review board meeting.
Okay, is that open to the public in the evening, or is it during the day?
It is. You should get notified, correct, on a site plan?
I'm not sure. I don't believe it's going to come before, certainly not before this commission on site plan.
No, not in front of us.
If I could, Madam Chair, and Mr. Greenwood, the commission's here to take your comments and feedback, certainly, and you can pose rhetorical questions that the applicant may want to respond to at time. But the commission's not here this evening to respond to questions, but to take your feedback, respectfully.
Okay. I thought maybe since staff was here, they might-
If they can help with those answers, that's fine, of course.
Okay. The other question I have is, you're proposing a buffer wall, and my question is, since my neighbors live further down Tybee Road, is the landscaping on the outside of the wall to be a benefit to the neighbors, or is the landscaping on the inside of the wall? Because it makes a big difference.
Yeah, more than likely, I would think the wall is going to be around the property line.
Well, if it's around the, on the outside of the property line, it's not a buffer.
The landscaping doesn't do you any good.
Right, it's not a landscape buffer. Are there going to be sidewalks installed from the site down to connect into other sidewalks on New Nolte? Those are some of my questions. And like I said, I do appreciate the cooperation that we had, and if we can get answers to these questions, I think as far as our neighbors are concerned, it's much better for this type of project, if we can get the buffering enhanced to, as far as compatibility.
Okay.
And I appreciate the ability to comment.
If you want to have a seat, we'll have the gentleman come back up, and maybe he
Good evening again. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering. Mr. Greenwood, certainly do appreciate the comments, and I'm going to try to address those. I'll leave it to staff to go ahead and talk about what a large tree, medium tree, small tree consists of.
And also that wall.
Correct.
The location of the wall.
Yes, ma'am. That's something I'm going to go ahead and address. So essentially, what I would commit to here, and what certainly the intent is, is that the wall and that location would be as close to the road, the internal drive aisle, as possible, and the landscaping, in fact, would be on the opposite side or facing the residents. It would be on the southern side. So that is the intent. Basically, you know, over the years, there has been a transition. In the old days, you would see much more the reverse, and everybody's kind of come to the realization, well, hey, really, what are we, we're supposed to be landscaping-
That's right.
And buffering to the outside, not the inside. So I will commit to that tonight, and that certainly was the intent.
Okay.
As far as the preservation, that fully is the intent. We're going to preserve as much of the existing vegetation that's there, and we're talking about native plant species, trees, shrubs, that are desirable in nature, you know, not the invasive species. I understand there's Brazilian pepper, camphor trees, things like that that are invasive. We'd like to remove those.
How about the size of the trees that you're replacing, you know? Large trees?
Certainly.
He would like to know.
Yeah, again, I'd like staff to go ahead and address that as far as what the LDC's intent is. I can tell you in my perspective what, you know, what I believe a large tree basically is a canopy-type of tree. I know Mr. Greenwood is certainly familiar. We're talking trees that reach mature height.
No, his question is, how large of a tree are they planting the plant, not what it's going to grow into?
Certainly, yeah. I'm just, I'm trying to get there. I was just basically trying to give you a little background on what a large tree would be, a canopy tree, which would be like an oak tree, potentially a maple tree. What I would understand it to be is essentially is a three-inch caliper tree, which is a fairly large tree. What you would see is a street tree on many of the new roadways being constructed. You're looking at a tree that would be 10 feet in height or larger. The crown of the tree would be eight to 10 feet as well. So it's a fairly large tree, not something that would be at an inch and a half caliper, I think perhaps is what he may be referring to, so almost double that particular size. And we certainly would increase also the number, and we can stagger them and do different things to create and make sure we fill any voids that may exist in that particular area or along the entire perimeter where the buffer is proposed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Sidewalk.
A sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
I was going to address the sidewalk next to-
Sorry about that. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering. We basically have a five-foot sidewalk that's proposed that would be along the eastern boundary of the property, also together with an additional right-of-way dedication for Canoe Creek Road to enhance and provide additional space for future improvements. So you've got the five-foot sidewalk that would extend the entire property line along the east. And then you also see an accessible route, excuse me, from Canoe Creek Road heading west into the property, and that would provide pedestrians bicycle paths. We'd also be happy to look if the residents were amenable to it, and it's something that was desirable, perhaps incorporating another connection, you know, on the south or the western boundary, if the residents would like that, allowing potentially pedestrians to enter into the site. We'd have to make sure it was done in a secure and safe manner, but that would be something we'd be willing to look at.
Do we have any, anybody else that would like to come up, give us some comments? I know, okay. Well, you can fill it out afterwards. Just come on up.
Paper's right up here in front of our clerk.
State your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Peterson. I live at 3121 Pauli's Loop North in St. Cloud. I'm just a homeowner. Our property does completely, our backyard completely butts up to this property. And so we definitely have a concern. We've only lived here for a year, but that's one of the reasons why we bought the home, is because there's complete privacy in the backyard. And so we've discussed quite a few times with Mr. Kibler, and he's been great to answer all our questions. Something did come to light tonight that I hadn't really discussed, and I want to be sure that we do not want an entrance from the west side because we are on the west side. And so it's not that we don't want kids, you know, coming through our property, but that would reduce the amount of buffer or whatever we would have, you know, a view of the property, which we're trying to avoid if possible. We are grateful that the stormwater retention is on the west side, and that is, that is good for us. But he did mention a fence between, that runs north to south, between the retention area and the facility, the building, the educational building, and that it would run north to south. I'm not sure if there is a fence or a wall planned for the north side and the south side for that fence to actually connect to. But on the whole, we are very pleased with the buffer, and if a Brazilian pepper's taken down, that it would be replaced with some other type of natural vegetation. And we're grateful it's not a three-story apartment building, you know, where people can look right into our backyard. But we are concerned that the buffer is maintained completely, and that the only ingress and egress be from Canoe Creek Road and not on the west side of the property.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Does staff or engineer want to answer some of the questions she had?
Good evening again. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering. You know, if the residents, Mrs. Peterson, really does not want a connection to the west, we were certainly just offering it there if the residents want it. We're not, it's not something we're seeking. We certainly didn't depict it on our plan, so I just want to make that clear. We're not requesting that here tonight, and if the residents don't want it, we're certainly opposed to it as well.
Okay.
As far as the buffers, you know, we have made a commitment. We do intend on continuing to work with the residents as we move through the process. This isn't something where we show up to the meetings and we disappear. You know, we're going to be involved throughout the project. We have promised to work with the neighbors in identifying existing material, plant material, trees, shrubs that are desirable and that would want to be maintained. And so we'll make sure that that's done as we move throughout the process and get to the, if we get to the point of construction, so that those existing vegetation and plant materials are not removed. We're going to be very careful about that. But I think, I think that addresses everything. If the commission members have any questions?
Yeah, she questioned about the fencing around the retention pond?
Yes, sir. So essentially, there's requirements, educational facility requirements, to preserve and protect children from entering, you know, a stormwater pond like that. So we would meet those requirements. If at the time when SDP site development plans are prepared and proposed, there is not fencing on the north or the south, we would have to figure out a way to enclose that. The educational facility itself is essentially, as viewed from the outside, is essentially, you know, one solid building, residential in nature as far as the materials and architectural design, as you have seen from the exhibits. But we can figure out a way to go ahead and incorporate additional fencing, but the idea is that the wet detention pond as proposed, as you see on the plan, would be fenced out or fenced away from the children, so there would be no direct access.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Greenwood?
I have one follow-up question.
Okay.
I know it was presented as-
Sir, is there going to need to speak to the microphone?
And state your name and address again, please.
Richard Greenwood, 2250 Tybee Road, St. Cloud. I know the plan was presented as a concept plan. Is the plan adopted as a condition of the conditional use, and does that make it binding?
Again, Mr. Greenwood, tonight, the commission's not here to answer any questions, it's to take the feedback. This, the case before the commission tonight is simply the conditional use request from the applicant.
Maybe they can answer the question. Are you the attorney?
I'm the attorney for the commission, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, maybe one of you could answer the question.
Yeah. What I was explaining to you, Mr. Greenwood, is that the commission's not answering questions tonight. They're taking feedback, okay? This is a conditional use application, and the factors in the Land Development Code will be reviewed.
I'm familiar with conditional use process. I've been doing this for 45 years.
But then you would understand that the commission is here to take your feedback before deliberating and making a decision. Thank you.
I do have a question, and maybe someone can answer.
I'll be happy to meet with him offline and answer his questions.
Okay, thank you. At this point, close this for our public comments. Do we have any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any questions? If not, then I'll take a motion.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution Number CNU20-00003, Resolution Number 2020-144R, based on the six factual matters within the Land Development Code.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes? Three to zero?
We got a vote. I heard one aye.
Yeah. Three ayes.
Everyone? Okay, I'm sorry, couldn't hear. All right. Thank you. Passed three, zero, correct? All aye?
Yes, sir.
Three, zero.
Two women and one man.
Thank you.
The next case is the RC case, CMA 20-0003/2020-21, zoning map amendment.
Good evening. Melissa Dunklin again, Planning and Zoning Manager. This item is a request for a zoning map amendment for approximately a third of an acre, generally located east of Missouri Avenue and south of Town Park Court. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning from agriculture to R1B, single-family dwelling district. The requested zoning classification is consistent with the low-density residential future land use category and is compatible with the surrounding area and will cause no adverse impacts to city facilities. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. Staff has reviewed this request and is recommending approval of Ordinance 2020-21. Likewise, it is requested that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Ordinance Number 2020-21 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code. The applicant is present and available for questions.
Hold on a second. She's doing her housekeeping. She's doing her housekeeping. Thank you. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Gary Fitz. I live at 268 Sage Crest Drive in Ocoee, Florida. And like I said, I'm seeking to purchase these pieces of property, is why we're trying to get them rezoned, just to bring them into the same compliance as everything else on the street and develop them as a single-family residence. Right now, with the agricultural zoning, the setbacks and stuff don't allow them to be built on, basically. So in order to make use of this property, then we need a rezoning. So if you have any questions of me that I can help with, be more than happy to.
So by the looks of the map here, it's two parcels?
There are two parcels, yes, sir.
And they tow, both parcels, a total .35 acres?
Approximately, yes.
So what kind of housing are you looking to develop in there?
Single-family residential, about 1,500 square feet, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, basically the same thing that's on everything on either side of it. On the adjoining properties there, in Town Park Court, you'll find very similar product, and you know, it's exactly what I'm planning on putting there.
Are you, are you putting one home in there, or?
It'd be two residences.
Two residences.
Two parcels, two houses.
Under two parcel, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
One per partial?
Excuse me?
One per partial?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't think there's any public left, so.
Yeah. Okay, do we have anybody in the public that would like to make a comment? No? Okay, but have a seat.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Not P. ma'am.
No. I guess I'll call for motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of Ordinance Number 2020-21, DRC Case Number ZMA20-0003, based on the 16 findings with the Land Development Code.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3 to 0.
Passes 3-0.
Passes 3-0. This is, this is everything, so we're closing.
Next meeting?
The next meeting is?
Next meeting? Next meeting is?
The next meeting is September 15th. And as far as I know, it'll still be held until further notice here in this location, the St. Cloud Community Center.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Thank you much, Jesse.
This meeting is closed for today. Thank you.